We'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. Today is Friday, December fifteenth, 2017, at nine AM. We're at the Community Center, 3500 Edgewater Drive, Sebring, Florida, 33872. We're going to go ahead and go through each appeal on an individual basis. I'll go off and I'll read their assessment appeal, and then we can have open discussion, and then we'll take a vote at the end. First appeal is A, property ID 1066, 1067, and 1068, from Ryan A. Watson. Mr. Watson wrote in, "This is my first year living in Sunland Lakes. I was unaware of the unity of title until now, so if you could approve for this to take effect for 2018." I did try and reach out to make sure. I wanted to clarify some things with Mr. Watson. I left the door, door tag on his door. He never did respond. The unity of title will automatically take effect for 2018. I was under the assumption that he wanted this for 2017, which was just built in November. The unity of title was performed on November sixth, so six days after when the assessments were out. But based off of this interpretation, it will automatically take place in 2018.
But is 2017 still due?
2017 right now is currently due.
So that's what it's concerned, is the 2017?
I'm not sure. The way it reads, it says 2018. I tried to reach out and make that. I called the district number twice.
It almost...
I believe it says in here to take effect for 2018, so I'm, I'm, I'm going to make an assumption he's saying, "I don't have it now, but can you take it for 2018?"
That's what I'm taking as well.
And it, and it's written in here, and I'm sure he understands that once he does this unity of title, he is, to the best of my knowledge, locked into this. He can't turn around, subdivide, or sell any of that property.
Correct.
That's all locked into one forever and ever.
Correct.
Okay.
Like I said, I was under the assumption that he miswrote the year, because 2017's still outstanding. So I, I figured he still wanted it for 2017, because he only missed it by a six-day window. But because I wasn't out, I wasn't able to get ahold of him, I'd recommend that we just proceed with what he wrote in, and it will automatically take an effect in 2018. It's already been performed. He will receive half rates on each one of the lots next to him going forward.
Yeah.
Unless we wanted, you know, have that discussion on implementing it for 2017.
No, I, I look at it as effective in 2018. That's just my thought.
Yeah, my thought was the same. I felt that he was trying to say that, uh, waived the 2017, because he wasn't aware of it, and he would like for the charges to take effect in 2018. But, you know, because I didn't know something, that I should be able to say, "Okay, I don't know it, so let me go with it, let me not do it."
Where is his actual residence, permanent residence? Is it, is it this, uh...
4100 is...
Is this debtors' permanent residence?
Correct.
Okay, so he should...
And he's purchased, he's bought them.
On each side.
On each side, correct.
So he, to the best of your knowledge, he lives here in Sunland Lake full-time?
Correct.
Okay, and you did reach out to him?
I checked the closing date, and it looks like he obtained, uh, title of the property in December of 2016.
Yep.
So, I guess we'll go ahead and take a vote on just approving it for 2018, which is going to automatically take place either way. Chrissy?
Ms. Johnson?
Um, yes.
Mr. DeJesus?
Yes.
Supervisor Kim?
Yes.
Next is 2018. 2018. Next is property ID 2101, Frances and Marilyn Eisenmenger. This is the property for 7746. She writes in, "It also cost me even more because of the exchange to a US funds. There's been few differences on the property since it was purchased by my parents on June 28th, 1978. I believe there isn't even a road access to the lot. I've tried selling it, but have had no luck with that. I am a senior citizen of Canada on a fixed income. I have never or will never use the golf course, restaurants, or any other services that is offered. I cannot afford to build on it. I was told years ago I could not put a trailer on the lot. Please reconsider my maintenance assessment." So I provided an aerial map to see where her property is located. It's west of Cortez. There is no road access to that lot.
No one out there.
Could I have, I have a question?
Uh-huh.
Okay, um, most of these are vacant lots. Is it possible to have, because some of them you can't build on, and there's no access, so I don't understand before, I know the assessment, and I know what it covers, you know, security, maintenance, road development, and all of those things. However, the lots are not in a situation where they get any of that, even security. I can understand security going by vacant lots to keep them lottery, you know, loitering and to keep trash coming out. Is it, is it possible to prorate? And, are some of these same people are the ones that are asking for these appeals?
Uh-huh.
You know, every year they're asking, and every year we have to decide. Is it possible to do an ass, to assess a different amount for vacant lots?
I think I can, you know, potentially. I think those are all great questions, because this has been a discussion that's gone on for a while now. And to do an assessment, prorate or change that requires a district-wide change, because a lot of people be affected. So you can't really do it for one. So what they have to do is have a study done, and they've had them done in the past, and then they can go in and they can assess things differently. But it goes across the board now.
Right, right.
And I think it's a very valid point. It's a discussion that people are saying, gee, you know, you've got people out on all of these lots, hundreds and hundreds of lots. Some of them don't even pay, though, anymore. They, they're, what, what I would like to see is something, and I'm not aware of it, and I try to research it, that this lot is, quite frankly, is not worth a lot of money. And she's paying consistently every year an assessment on it. The bid, Sunland Lakes is not in the business of buying property, you know, homes and land, but she, if she's trying to sell it, maybe there is a process, and maybe you know this, Omar, that she can say, "You know what? I'm going to forfeit this property. I'm going to give it to, and get herself free and clear off of this." Because, you know, she's, this is a thousand-dollar valuation on the lot.
Every, and it's every year.
And, you know, so that's going to be, I would think, a discussion for the future. But I don't, is there something that can be done for her?
So one thing that I've, I've researched is she's already paid her 2017, so she has made her payment. Going back to the proration, we do prorate based on our rates. Everything that does, that's unimproved, we do give a discount. There is a certain benefit that they receive as far as administration and some of the costs that, that are involved in Sunland Lake. I guess the question is, what is the appropriate rate? You know, 294 may not be that appropriate rate, so we're going to have a study done on that going forward. But as far as her selling it, she could relinquish, but seems like she's still interested and has value, and, you know, she's already invested so much. So that, that's kind of the, the tough selling point is, at what point do they make that choice?
And, and that's, that's what I, I can't second-guess what her thoughts are.
No.
And it doesn't sound like she wants to relinquish the property based on the fact that she continues to pay. She's been paying this for so long.
Right.
Uh, but I'm not quite sure until a study, study is done, what an unimproved lot should be reassessed at.
Yeah, I hope, once we do the study, we'll, we'll take care of this issue going forward. But right now, she didn't really specify what she's asking for. She didn't specify an amount, so that makes it a little bit more, more difficult to, to make a decision on this property. I did get the exchange rate, which right now, one Canadian dollar is about 78 cents. Yes.
But we're, we're faced with that. A lot of people have that issue.
Correct.
They would be faced with that anywhere in the States, so...
So I'm going to recommend that we take a vote on not making any change or, you know, denial of this appeal. Chrissy?
Ms. Johnson?
Uh, yes.
Mr. DeJesus?
Yes.
Supervisor Kim?
Denied.
Next is property ID 3264, David Ronald and Andrew Sutch. They write in, "Please note, I pay my county taxes yearly to the tax collector. The assessment charges on these vacant lots are too high, as we cannot build on these lots. There are no roads or services available to the, to this lot, so it did not cost Sunland Lake any expenses. Please see the Sunland Lake assessment brochure that I received. None of these apply to vacant lots. In meeting with Omar DeJesus, Amanda Valentine, and Tanya Kennedy, it was decided that I would ask that the assessments be reduced and that any late charges be eliminated."
Now, if I saw this correctly, they haven't been paying their assessments.
They have not been paying their assessments. It's like it's outstanding since 2012.
So they haven't been paying their assessments?
Correct. I pulled some of the conversations, because he mentioned that he met with myself, and then he's, he's been going back and forth. He's from Canada. We have emails going back for about a year and a year or so now. He was one of the individuals who was interested in doing the lot swap at one point in time. So he came down, he actually visited with us. One of the requirements of the lot swap program at the time was for you to be fully current on your property. So we went through the whole process. He found a few lots that he was interested in, but he wasn't willing to pay the full amount to become current in order to perform the swap. He wanted to make this request. Now, at this point in time, the lot swap program is no longer an option, so he won't have the ability to swap even if we did decide or didn't decide to waive any penalties or assessments, or whatever that might be. So I think the dynamics changed of his request. But anyways, going back to his appeal, he's asking that we reconsider his late charges and that the assessments be reduced.
I don't know what he means by reconsider the late charges. I mean, it's, it's kind of tough not having...
Well, late charges, he wants to be eliminated.
You know? And reducing the, like, his couple thousand, what is it, twenty?
Twenty-two.
Hundred in the rare?
Yeah.
I don't know. You, you pulled the, the conversations that you had, so I don't know. I just think that, once again, this goes back to an assessment issue that would be district-wide. You can't do it for one if you can't do it for all.
Right.
So my recommendation at this point would be, until something changes, it would be denied. And if we change the assessments, then maybe come back and appeal at, at that time.
Correct.
Ms. Johnson?
Denied.
Mr. DeJesus?
Denied.
Supervisor Kim?
Denied.
Next is property ID 3291, also Ronald K. Sutch. Pretty similar description. Says the assessments on vacant lots are too high, as he cannot build on this, there's no services available. Mentions the brochure, all these amenities, and services do not apply, and is requesting the assessment be reduced and late charges be eliminated. So based off preceding vote, I think we just, should just go ahead and take the same vote again.
Ms. Johnson?
Denied.
Mr. DeJesus?
Denied.
Supervisor Kim?
Denied.
Next is property ID 4921, Rona O. Clark Campbell. Parcel ID is 7819 Paradella Drive. She mentions, she states, "We paid on this property from 2004. When it was paid off in June this year, they paid Sunland Lakes $33,000 for both lots." Says, "In November, we are still being billed for the, for the bond and assessments." So she actually has two parcels, 7819, 7825, Paradella Drive.
And, and the issue here is they, they paid for the lot, but they haven't paid for bonds and any late fees or assessments?
Correct. So it seems, I did some research on this property, and it looks like it was a, a property purchased from DFC, which is a company who sold these lots, receives the payments and then pays the district back for any monies it collects. Seems like the, the owner was unaware that, that $16,000 payoff per property wasn't really a payoff. What it was, is the property, property current, there's still a bond remaining out there, and there's still assessments that will continue on an annual basis.
Let me ask you the question, then, Omar. The bond balance and the open item balance, and it clearly states in our document here with the strap number and everything else, that it is not a payoff, okay? Now, when, when these people came to pay off $33,000, do we inform them that there's a bond on it? Do we not inform them of it? Or is it their due diligence to, to say, "Hey..."
Well, that's why I think the, with this situation, the owner isn't the one making the payment. They're making a, a payment to a third-party company, who is then in return making it to the district. So we have no communication with that owner to inform them of where that money's being allocated. DFC, and we're unaware of what DFC is advising this customer. We don't know if they're telling them there's a bond. We don't know if they're telling them this is a full payoff. We don't know what DFC is issuing. DFC is the one being in contact with the district, because they have the agreement between the buyer and DFC.
Can we not reach out to DFC to try to find out what did transpire with these people in terms of the bonds and things?
We can.
Because I'm, if DFC has other additional properties, and people look to buy those properties, and they think that they're getting a particular payoff?
Correct.
You know, I mean, they should have got an attorney involved anyway to do a title research. But, you know, can we reach out to DFC, or is that something that we can't do?
My advice to residents who've had this issue, or, is for them to seek their own attorney and contact and seek out what happened between them and DFC. The district hasn't gotten involved with personal transactions or dealings of that nature. If they were quoted a payoff and were told a payoff, that's between them and DFC. The district was never involved. We never provided them with a payoff. So we try to stay away from that as much as possible from the district standpoint. I think this is an issue between what Ms. Clark was told from DFC themselves.
So the next question would be, that, that will be your recommendation back to Ms. Clark, to say, "You need to get involved, get an attorney involved, because there are outstanding bonds on this."
Correct. My recommendation would be, we'll write a letter saying this was denied, but our opinion is, um, this was not a payoff. It looks like you need to, you know, do some due diligence and find out if you were quoted a payoff with DFC, and then obtain legal counsel if you choose to do so.
Okay.
Ms. Johnson?
Denied.
Mr. DeJesus?
Denied.
Supervisor Kim?
Denied.
Next is a series of property from CB and Rajan Bala Patel. Properties IDs 8075, 8166, 8202, 8359, 8360, 8471, 8472, and 8475, and 8476. So they write in, "We have lived in Sunland Lake enough to say that assessments have gone skyrocketing. Having several lots make, makes it harder, and also frustrating that they are more than actual city taxes. I do not think there are more services than there was in 1990, the year we moved in. Can they be capped off for people who have more lots like us?" So these, they are being billed the assessed rate, they're not being billed more or less. Once again, this appeal doesn't really state what they want it to be capped at, what they're requesting. There's an amount they want refunded, it's pretty generic. But from our standpoint, there is no cap. If you have 10 lots, or 20, or 50, you kind of know going into it that you're going to have that city tax and district assessment when you purchase them.
I suspect that...
Is it possible to, because, you know, they mention all, many of them are saying some of the services that they don't get. So what about the golf maintenance, since that, they're not necessarily, could they possibly get that way?
Which, which property?
The golf, uh, see...
So, yeah, on that property, they are right on the golf course, there's a...
So they are on the golf?
Yeah, you can see the, I provided you an aerial map, and you can see there, but right, right up to the course.
Oh, okay.
And there's only, they're only being charged that golf course on just that one property, correct.
Okay, okay.
I suspect that the properties, and I'm hearing, and I'm kind of reading into it, the properties were purchased potentially for resale, you know, as an investment, which makes good, you know, good business sense. And I think it goes along with it, the, the assessment. And until we, if we evaluate or reevaluate this year through assessments, then they would in fact get a break. I look back many years, the assessments have gone up, but I'm not so sure that they've skyrocketed. You know, I mean, I went back quite a few years.
Well, I think for the last, I believe it's eight years now that we haven't made any change in...
They haven't.
It hasn't changed since 2000...
Nine, didn't it say nine?
Actually, before that, it was around 2004, it started to go up.
Yes.
I mean, it went up in, started in seven, eight, nine, but, I mean, it was pretty low in 2004 and 2005, so...
It was. That was my first year here.
It was, it was lower.
So I'm going to recommend the denial. There is no cap based off how many lots you own here in the district.
Ms. Johnson?
Denied.
Mr. DeJesus?
Denied.
Supervisor Kim?
Denied.
Next is property ID 8797 from Daryl Duffy. She states, "She's requesting to have the golf maintenance fee removed from this lot. This lot does not have a view of the golf course, and no maintenance is being done by the golf course. I would appreciate it again this year if you would refund the amount paid."
I went over and looked at the property, I looked at your aerial view. I gave it to her last year. I don't have a problem with it, you know, just, you know, giving it to her again. We did it once again, once before, I...
And, and, and that's my, that's my point. If we're going to do this every year, like, like we were saying, let's reassess, go back and decide if we want to do something different for the lots as far as the assessment. I know we have to do it across the board, but that would be really good, because if they're going to keep coming back every year, then, you know, you're coming back every year and you're doing it, which is good, because she, she, she has a valid point, so...
There's only something that could happen in the future that could become cleared there, and then it would qualify.
Well, it's based right now on the description. We did go back and do some research. Last year, there was some conversation on this lot, because you can see how wooded that land behind it. Right now, the definition that qualifies for a golf course is if you abut the golf course directly. Right now, we use that definition based off the property appraisers' property line of the golf course, which includes that, that wooded area. If it was to cut that out and use that as wetland, then she wouldn't qualify. So it's, I would say it's a little gray, because she is abutting the golf course property, which that's the only requirement right now for the fee. We did pull a letter from 2003, which was the first year that we had that golf rate assessed, and it says, "The basis for the difference in the golf assessment added benefit for the lots that front the golf course received because they front the golf course that is operated and maintained by the districts, and, and in terms of market value of the lot." So I guess it goes back to questioning or some gray area, that, that she receive a benefit for higher market value when she really doesn't, she really doesn't abut the golf course. So, um, like I said, we do charge everyone else on this street the same assessment, because technically, they do abut the golf course. So it brings that discussion into play, is, should we look at this definition? I've heard in the past, you know, it's for maintenance. Is there being any maintenance then behind? And, you know, deer runs completely different from turtle run. Is it, is it based off market value, and is that true? So I think we need to go during this year, if we do that assessment methodology, is really clarify some things regarding that golf course assessment, and what qualifies and what doesn't qualify, because right now, it's a little bit, it's a little bit gray.
That would be good during the assessment time, then, you know, to discuss it, figure it out.
So you're making a recommendation to vote on continuing?
I would give it to her at this current time. You know, for this year, I wouldn't do it indefinitely. I would give her the, you know, the, the break.
Ms. Johnson?
Denied.
Mr. DeJesus?
Denied.
Supervisor Kim?
Approve.
Next is property ID 9681, 9694, 9730, and 9748 from Andrea Yared. She states, "I am requesting a total refund for all years from 2006 for the non-addendum assessment fees I paid. After so many years of calls and misleading information, it is now understood that there will be no further infrastructure developed in this area, Sunland Lake of Sebring, and Sunland Lake of Sebring. Therefore, I will never have access to my property or build or enjoy any benefits as long as I live." I stated, "This area is, this area of property will remain as a wildlife reserve and to be collecting money from..." I can't agree with that one. People is considered fraud, yeah. Unsuspecting innocent people is considered fraud. I am being financially raped. This is a great disappointment from the, from this government agency to continue with such a fraudulent act.
And I read through all of this. They haven't been paying their assessments for a while.
Looks like, yeah.
They're in the rares considerably on all of these properties. I don't know that they've reached out and had any one-on-one conversations with the district about this. I don't know that you know that.
No, this property is...
I mean, they're asking for everything they've paid to get it back.
Since 2006, yeah.
I, I can't, I'm a fiscally responsible point.
No, I wouldn't recommend that. Like I said, she's not the only law owner that has property in this area. There's others that have paid. She has been delinquent since 2013, so she isn't paying anymore, so it's not costing her anything. Based off the aerial map, her properties are located in Unit 14, we call it, which a lot of the lot there, a lot of the land there is owned by the state of Florida. We can reach out through the letter and recommend that she reach out to the state of Florida. They are interested in obtaining all that land for conservation purposes, and she might be able to seek out some sort of sale arrangement with the state, but that's the only thing that I can recommend at this point.
Ms. Johnson?
If, if you did recommend that to the state, okay, of course, they don't pay any tax, they don't pay any, so they would, she would just do it, essentially give it to them?
Basically, you'd need it over, yeah. There might be some implications on whether the state would receive it with such a delinquent tax balance, because the state doesn't pay taxes.
Right.
So I'm not sure if they were able to receive it with outstanding county's access and Sunland Lake assessments. I'm not sure if there has to be a free and clear title at the time of transfer. Or that's something that she'd have to look, obtain some sort of legal counsel?
And she purchased it? She was not aware of the wet, the implications that she could not...
I'm not, I'm not sure. I believe a lot of people, when I, when I speak to residents that have purchased property in this areas, they were told that it was going to be developed. They were told it was going to have an airport or some sort of, you know, promise that's never really taken place. So it was an investment decision that they made at the time, and it never just came to So I'm going to recommend that we deny this for no refund at all.
Ms. Johnson?
Denied.
Mr. DeJesus?
Denied.
Supervisor Kim?
Denied.
Next is property ID 11102, Joquin and Murda Cologne. They state, "We are requesting this appeal because this is a vacant lot, and we are residents in Georgia. Most of the benefits derive from this tax. We don't live there to enjoy or participate of. Please consider waiver, since we've been paying since 2004, or a reasonable decrease." So this kind of goes back to the same vacant lot issue that needs to be addressed district-wide, not on an individual basis.
So is she all part of, she's upstate on there, so it appears that she is...
Let's start with check. This was a $25,000 lot, I believe, they paid.
For purchase?
I believe, yeah. And it was assessed by the county for six. It is on a road.
Right. That's a nice lot compared to some of the other vacancies that are written in.
Certainly. It's a buildable lot.
Correct.
That's the, the value there, I mean...
And would she could possibly sell it if she was interested?
Well, that's the thing. I mean... Well, that's the thing, I mean, do they want to sell it? Have they attempted to, or, yeah, have they attempted to sell it? I don't know. It, it does, it goes back to the, the whole assessment study again, I think. You can't do it for one and not for everybody.
Right, well, she does receive the improved rate, which is the higher four-nine-nine forty-three compared to the two-nine-four.
Correct.
So...
It, it certainly is sellable for, for, for anybody that wants, if they want to attempt to sell it, they can. I would deny it at this point in time.
Percy?
Ms. Johnson?
Denied.
Mr. De Jesus?
Denied.
Supervisor Camp?
Denied.
Last property is property ID one-four-three-two-eight, Sarah Ruiz. She states, "The site contains three-point-one-eight acres of wetlands and I have provided documentation attached to support this claim. I ask that you reduce my assessment for the unusable and unbuildable land. Please reconsider my property tax assessment and return, and in turn reduce the amount of property taxes I'll have to pay this year. Your time and consideration is greatly appreciated." So, this is a property that she began appealing in two thousand and six, we granted it for the last two years, this would be the third. I provided a calculation on how, how much the adjustment would be, so her total build amount, assessed amount now is ten thousand two-twenty-three forty-four. It's for nine-point-nine-seven acres, so we divided that to get a per-acre cost, we multiply by the three-point-one acres that she's asking for to get the full adjustment. She did provide the two thousand and fourteen Holston Engineering letter that states that it is a permit for wetland restricted use and the, the permit does expire in twenty nineteen, so...
There's substantial background information here, okay, from Holston. And at the same token, it doesn't say that there's any, there's no present intention to impact the site on the wetlands, but it also talks about, remember these sink, sand sinks and gopher tortoises? All of that survey, you know, proved negative, there's nothing there. I think the permit's good until two thousand and nineteen, I, I think we should continue to honor that at the prorated amount. Which, you know, I did the recalculation, of course, you're the CPA, so you would do it. But, that's my personal opinion once again, and then we revisit it.
Like I said, Ms. Ruiz has written in two years in a row, and last year there was some discussion regarding, just because she has a permit, why is it fair that she's receiving the reduction when some of the vacant lots that are unbuildable as well aren't, you know, we've denied or aren't receiving that same benefit, so why is there a difference between the two? And that was a, a conversation, I think last year we went off precedence, which was set in two thousand and sixteen. So, that's something to consider on this property is, do you give her that benefit for...
I misunderstood.
So, what happens when it, when it expires, explain that to me, you're saying right now she has, and what's in place at the twenty nineteen?
So, right now, she has a wetland or other services formal determination. It's issued by the Southwest Water Management District. Trying to see what it says there.
The wetlands are flagged on the site, is that...
So, it says, "The nine-point-nine-seven acre project area contains three-point-three acres of wetland, forested mix, and point fifteen acres of vegetated, non-forested wetlands." So, basically, it gives her a special determination, not only with the district, but with the county, that that piece of land is, they charge the less tax. It's unusable because it's determined as the wetland. Last year, you know, one of the supervisors or one of the committee members mentioned that, you know, some of this other land can also be considered wetland or unusable. So, it was just something that we talked about for a little bit and...
It's a valid point, but, you know, none of these other people have gone forward and...
But, she's also current compared to some of them, so there's a lot of different factors, you know, that she's still paying six thousand dollars worth on that piece of property for all the one, all the amount that's usable. So, there's some different factors to consider, it's not completely apple to apples, but just a point that I wanted to mention because it was brought up last year. I guess going forward, what if someone bought, you know, a piece of property in the district and decided to, to have the county issue it as, you know, forestry or agriculture, which reduces their taxes, then they won't ever build on it. Well, can they come in and make the same claim and receive the same benefit that she's receiving? So, imagine, let's say, let's go back to just a, a point in case, let's say Ryan Watson bought two lots left next to him, they're undeveloped, they're fully forested, what if he got some sort of permit to say, you know, these will never be untouched, they're going to be for conservation purposes, we will never build on them, please waive, you know, a hundred percent of my assessment? Which is just a random scenario, but it just kind of, it depicts what could happen.
Yeah, I, I guess that when somebody goes through the time and trouble going to a waste water, you know, waste management company, and when they go and they talk to and have Holston Engineering come in, and, you know, they were pretty serious about, is this really considered wetlands, is there problems here or not? There was a lot of negative impact it said in here as far as finding certain types of species and things, but... You know, you're saying you started it last year, in two thousand and sixteen, you approved it in two thousand and sixteen, two thousand and seventeen you approved it?
Correct, we went off precedence because twenty sixteen, I, I believe the twenty sixteen approval form mentioned that as long as she has this permit in place, they recommend to keep it going. So, we went off that precedence, we went off the permit, which, once again, it's a formal document. I just want to make the committee aware that if next year someone receives some sort of formal document, then it could open the case of, right, correct.
We're talking, let me go back to the number again, it's quite a bit. The adjustment's thirty-two-hundred-and-sixty dollars and eighty-four cents. Based on that three-four-one-eight acres of wetlands.
She has made a full payment, so if we decided to deny it, she would have to pay the remainder. So, she is completely paid.
She's already paid?
In assumption that she's going to receive the benefit, correct.
She, what, what number has she paid?
She paid the sixty-six eighty-four ten, which includes a four percent discount for November.
You're right, assuming that she was going to get this approved.
If we approve it for this year, but, we can't specify that we may not approve it next year.
Yeah, it's on an annual basis, there's nothing guaranteeing her to receive this benefit. She has to file the, the assessment appeal form every year, so we can continue to, you know, we can approve it again and if something does come down the road, we can address it at that time. But, yeah, there's nothing guaranteeing her to automatically receive this benefit.
But, there is, like you say, we approve her and we continue to approve it through twenty nineteen.
Correct.
Then other people are asking similar...
Well, they haven't asked yet, it was just a voice of concern that could...
If they could, this is a tough one.
Like I said, I'm sure there's, she's taken the time, like you said, she's taken the time to go to DEP or, you know, Swift Mud and get the permit, but there's a lot of properties on twenty-seven that could be considered wetland and unusable towards certain areas on those acre lots because they're applied pretty large, but they haven't gone through those steps, so... Do we start giving benefits based off wetland determinations or conservation or whatever might come in the future?
This can be, this could start a real...
Yeah.
Real problem.
She's pretty faithful in paying.
She is, she is. She has come into the district a few times and mentioned that, you know, she, she acquired this, this property from her husband and her husband purchased it as an investment. I think she's ninety, ninety-plus years old now, so she really has no interest in the property. She's looking to try and relinquish her ownership, either through sale or some other source, so... I, I, I don't foresee this going on with her for an extended period of time, but we could open another door for other, other cases.
I don't know, I'm a, I really, I'm a little bit of a, I didn't quite read it when I was going through this material, I didn't quite read it that way. Now, you've given me some food to find some things.
And she is considered selling it?
She is, correct.
She's thinking about selling it, you're saying? In that case, I mean, you've had that conversation?
Yes.
Then I'd deny it. I don't want to start, I don't want to start, this is just, once again, my personal opinion. I don't want to start a, you know, a barrage of people coming in looking for special breaks on, on assessments. They bought the land, they bought it knowingly, somebody did, that this was what was there, so... I mean, the lands I bought in the past, I knew if it was wetland or not, you know, it was part of the package, so... Once again, that's my personal opinion.
And that's something, once again, when you go through the assessment methodology, maybe we can clarify, I, I don't know how in detail you can get, but if there's land that's considered conservation or wetlands and they can strap that separately, then maybe we can have a different rate versus usable, buildable land having a different rate. There's just so many different factors to each lot that makes it so difficult when you set out a flat rate for a certain type of code.
Well, our house up north had, it was protected area in the back, we paid the tax on it.
Yes.
Even though it was protected, we paid the tax on it for all the years we had, but we knew when we bought and built.
It's a reduced tax versus, so that's what, I think that's another thing that we should probably look at is having a reduced rate, so that way it's fair across the board, it's not special circumstances if you have some sort of determination on your land or if you can prove you have a determination on your land, so...
What, that's your thought to deny it?
I'm, I'm thinking because if she's thinking about selling it and we continue to give her this adjustment, she's going to put it off as long as she can, not saying that she would, but if, if, if we start requiring her to pay the full assessment, she may think even stronger about trying to sell it.
Yeah, and I, and maybe those people that came and purchased it would be of the same opinion that...
Yeah.
That was a, a piece of property that would only be assessed at a, a less value because of the wetlands. That's just my thought, I would, I would deny it, but...
Ms. Johnson?
Denied.
Mr. De Jesus?
Denied.
Supervisor Camp?
Denied.
Public comment? None?
I, well, I have a comment, please, look at, look at the assessment of the lot. You know, I don't know what team or how do you go about getting a, a team of people or assessment group because it really needs to be evaluated, you know, some people, they may be locked in, but they're paying for these assessment fees and they really aren't getting too much out of it. And some of them can't get too much out of it.
You're absolutely correct and quite frankly, they were going to do an assessment study. We were looking to go out to bid because you go out to bid for various, and we've had some different people do assessments. The methodology that they came up with was not, at the time, the board didn't feel that the methodology was a good methodology. That doesn't mean, so, I believe, and I've, I've had conversations with Tanya, that we need to look at the assessments and, you know, get a, a study done, and so she's told me that we're going to do that.
We're drafting, process of drafting another RFP, we're trying to find vendors. We had one vendor lined up to look at that, they came and did a semi-formal presentation to the board and they ended up backing out and not, choosing not to help us again. So, we're on the look again to try and get some people to make sure we get some bids on that.
We have money in the budget for it.
For it, wonderful.
And we hope to...
It's, it's, you know, it's a large undertaking because it doesn't only, you're dealing with commu, commercial properties, you're dealing with properties that are, and don't even have access to them, and you're dealing with them. And we have a table wood that's part of that whole evaluation, so it's, it's very complex.
Okay.
Meeting adjourned.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.